Okay. I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, November 23, 2015, and the time is 7:10 PM. Dr. Richardson, there are a number of items in the table file.
Okay, yes. Tonight, we've got in your table file, there will be a copy of the PowerPoint presentation to accompany the high school's presentation for tonight on their school improvement plan. We also have some additional personnel items in terms of appointments, increases, decreases, and change in assignment. And then, also have the copy of the summary report of the World's Best Workforce Plan that was actually delivered to the state as of last Thursday. And we'll talk a little bit about that at the end.
Thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for members of the district to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, we will move on, then, to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes for both the public hearing and the regular school board meeting held on November 9. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Noel, seconded by Jeff. Any questions or discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes for both the public hearing and the regular school board meeting held on Monday, November 9, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, I have several announcements this evening. First of all, I'd like just to, again, share with our audience the fact that we just completed the reception for National Merit Scholars and Committed Students, both the semifinalists and commended, which preceded our board meeting. And I believe, Audrey, are you the only one here tonight?
Yeah, well...
I'm not going to pick on her and make... Well, yes.
Yes.
Audrey, can I come to the podium and just introduce yourself? Okay?
My name is Audrey Cornkovan, and I'm a semifinalist for the National Merit Scholarship. So, yeah, and thank you for the reception.
You bet.
It was really awesome, and it was really cool to see all the comments, so...
Tonight, we had a chance to hear from, actually, our seven commended students and three semifinalists, of which six of our commended students and two of our semifinalists were able to be with us tonight, had some really interesting presentations in terms of sharing their teachers that they really appreciated, and having their teachers share some things about them. So, and it was all good, but, you know, very positive piece. And again, something that I think until you go through that piece, either as the teacher or the student, you don't really realize the power of having the chance to hear from someone you have a lot of respect and pride in, to hear what they're thinking about you and how they have enjoyed working with you over the years. So, good opportunity, and again, wish our semifinalists best of luck in the next round. The next piece that we have is a congratulations to our middle school eighth-grade geoscience teacher Tammy McDonough and Greenville Park media specialist Amanda Heinrichs on being selected as Northfield's 2015 TIES Exceptional Teacher Honorees. They will be honored during the TIES Education Technology Conference on the 15th of December. Ms. McDonough's use of technology tools to support learning through timely assessment and feedback and differentiation to meet students' needs benefits all of her classes. Furthermore, her willingness to step out and try strategies and tools that are unfamiliar and share them with others not only serves her students, but also her colleagues. Ms. Heinrichs's willingness to facilitate professional development sessions for staff and to support classroom learning and technology integration through her media classes benefits the entire learning community. TIES is an educational technology consortium of Minnesota schools. Their annual conference draws teachers from around the world each year and is the premier educational technology conference in Midwest. We'd like to, again, congratulate Amanda and Tammy on their outstanding work. We'd also like to have folks consider attending the first annual Torch Poetry Slam, which is coming up on Friday, December 4, at 7:00 PM in the auditorium at Northfield High School. There will be five celebrity judges. Do we know any of those celebrity judges, Mr. Hardy?
Yes, they're on the poster.
They're on the poster.
Kevin Dahl.
Senator Kevin Dahl, Mayor Dana Graham, KYMN Radio's Paula Grandquist, Torch Coordinator Susan Sanderson, and Northfield Middle School teacher Ruben Alvarez. Obviously, so that, all celebrities, very good. And, again, an opportunity for folks to hear from Torch students, who will be very excited to share their stories. Also, cash donations will be accepted at the door. All proceeds will go to the Latino Play Festival. We also would like to take this opportunity to thank Dakota Electric for their generous gift of $10,000 that was given to us as a district to help support our instructional services throughout the district, and an opportunity to use those dollars in whatever way is the most beneficial for us. We gave them three or four options of things that we could take a look at. They said, "All those sound great. Go forward and spend the dollars." So, it's kind of a nice piece, and appreciate Dakota Electric's gift. Finally, Northfield Public Schools recently served as an affiliate for TED MED Live. I don't know any of you that maybe who are aware of or did TED Talks in the past? This is a TED MED program which provides real-time video streaming of the TED MED Conference in Palm Springs, California, through collaboration with the Northfield Hospital and Clinics. We hosted eight 90-minute sessions in our high school auditorium. Each session was attended by a mix of students, teachers, and hospital and clinic employees. Community members were invited to participate in the three-evening sessions. Communications and partnership is one of our district's key strategies supporting our mission. The TED MED Live collaboration with Northfield Hospital and Clinics is one example of us living out that mission. So, a real opportunity to see how that technology would work for us, and really, a great chance for our kids to be kind of in the same space with practitioners in terms of the medical field, and to learn about a variety of different topics in medicine. So, again, congratulations there. I would also like to recognize that we celebrated our Northfields retired educators at noon today with our American Education Week Retired Educator Luncheon, and we basically had... The program was done by Grace, help me, Manglia, I believe. Manglia.
Manilia.
Manilia. Thank you, I appreciate that.
That's a cangilo.
I'm sure Grace will appreciate that, too. She's a Northfield High School senior, did just an outstanding job of sharing, again, what she saw as outstanding teachers that have supported her all through her elementary and secondary careers. So, a real opportunity, again, for our retired educators to hear from students about the impact that their lives and their work has had on students. So, and again, would really also thank community services for doing an outstanding job of putting this all together, as always, and making it all go just the way it should. And then, finally, just to share with you, I have been in contact this week with both Al Franken's office and John Klein's office. We have an issue that is boiling up as part of the reauthorization of ESEA, or the old No Child Left Behind. As I think those of you that have kind of watched this progressing, this is suddenly now on the fast track and the front burner, and we really appreciate that after eight years of struggle trying to get the program reauthorized. And the real focus has been on really pushing back the efforts to the states and to the local districts to really make decisions about how we should support our kids. Unfortunately, one of the things that's happening at the same time is a few states, including Minnesota, are going to be faced with a restarted assessment peer review program. And what's happening is, for those states, they are reviewing the language arts standards in the state. And if they determine that the language arts standards have standards in them other than just reading, then they are requesting that the states create new statewide assessments to measure writing, speaking, and listening. Obviously, nobody had imagined that that was anywhere on the burner. And in talking to both the Senator and the Congressman's office, you know, they are going to try to address in the bill, making sure that there's some framing around it, saying the expectation is not to now create a new, whole new set of additional tests. If all of these tests would occur, then we'd go from two tests per year per kid in grades three through eight, and again, in high school, to five tests per year. And we know how difficult it is to measure, in some cases, writing, even when we were only doing it at certain levels, but to do it every year is a whole other thing. So, I've been working with those folks and also with the Commissioner, trying to get our legislators tuned in. And the good thing is that both of them are obviously on the conference committee. Congressman Klein is actually chairing the conference committee, and Senator Franken is a Democratic member of the conference committee. So, our hope is that we get that piece nailed down, but it is problematic in that, at the same time, we're trying to really restrict the amount of new testing that's being done. The Federal Department of Education seems to be focused on trying to expand the number of tests that we're going to have to provide. So, just tune in as to... Sometimes, when you think things are going your way, something can happen on the other side. Okay, that's everything I have this evening.
Board members, is there anyone else who... I would just like to add our thanks to Dr. Richardson. The State Commissioner of Education Brenda Casilius was on the phone in less than a nanosecond calling Dr. Richardson to say, "You gotta do something." And so, Dr. Richardson has cultivated an excellent relationship with Representative Klein, and Senator Franken is very comfortable with the Northfield School District. So, they respect you as someone who knows what is right and has a great deal of experience. So, we always appreciate the extra effort that you go through to not only Northfield schools, but kids, really, in this case, nationwide. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll just hope they listen to you.
Yeah. And that I have no way of predicting.
Unfortunately, we have no control over... Is there a test we can administer to measure?
Is there a test we can... No, that would be a hearing test. We're talking speaking, listening, and writing.
Okay, so we'll move on. Tonight, we have for items for discussion or reports, we have two school improvement plan presentations, and we will begin with Bridgewater Elementary School.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present tonight. I'm Nancy Antoine, the principal at Bridgewater Elementary, and I am joined here with Hope Langston, who is an instructional coach at Bridgewater, and also the district assessment coordinator, Judy Vidito, who is our instructional coach at Bridgewater, and two of my first-grade teachers, Pam Charlton and Brittany Ellerbush. Happy to be here tonight. We're going to start with our presentation by introducing our site progress report to tell you how we've done in the past. We did have two goals that we were working toward, what is dealing with our reading and math, and we're looking at our students demonstrating growth for grade level proficiency or above in both reading and math, again, as measured by the MCA for grades three through five, and the MAP test in grades one and two, and the Northfield kindergarten academic benchmarks for our kindergarten students. For our climate goal, our goal was to have all of our students and staff contributing to a respectful and welcoming environment. And now, let's hear some of our data.
Good evening. Last year, we came to you, and we were not happy with our results, and we were going a different direction, getting away from setting goals at a macro level and going down to a micro level, and here is the reason why. So, that is the five-year trend up until 2014, and we just wanted to refresh your memory as to why we took the direction we did at Bridgewater. And you can see that, basically, our results had been fairly flat in math, and then the drop when the standards changed in reading in 2013, but again, not the level that we thought that we could attain. For our younger students, these are the reading and math, map results for the past five years, ending in 2014. We'll get to the 2015 data in just a bit, but again, just to show you where we were, pretty much flat or downward trends, and we wanted to see what we could do to go back to the drawing board and improve outcomes for our kids.
So, I'll have you take a moment just to review our building SMART goals in 2014-15. So, I want to just draw your attention to the goal column. And then, really, what we want to speak to is the outcomes of that, and we... And particularly, in the first row in the outcome, we had 46 quarterly common assessments given in grades K through five, and 80% of the students scored above 80% on 57 of those. And really, when you look at that 57%, you might think, "Well, why isn't that higher?" But I think, really, the instruction, the beauty of instruction, really comes with what occurs when kids don't reach that goal, and what occurs when they have. And our two wonderful first-grade teachers are going to talk to that a little bit more tonight, so I won't steal their thunder right now. And then, also, we had a goal of 88% of our students receiving no more than one fix-it plan, and we... Our outcome was 94% of our students received one fix-it plan or less for the 14-15 school year. A third goal that we had, 90% of our parents would agree that their child's social and academic needs are being met at Bridgewater, and we had 96 agreeing with that. So, we felt that we had good outcomes with the strategies that we used. And again, this is just a revisit of what our goal was. We wanted 80% of our K-5 students demonstrating that mastery of literacy. And really, our biggest... Hope talked about this briefly, was that we really wanted to focus on the standards-based micro-assessments throughout the year, and those micro-assessments are the common formative assessments. And if you remember, last year, we came and we really talked to you about what common formative assessments were, that they were ongoing, that they were frequent, and they were really a work in progress at our school. And at that time, we had, we, meaning the RTI coaches, along with Mary Grace Hansen, had experienced, and some Bridgewater teachers as well, now that I'm thinking about it, had gone to see Nicole Bogley, and now, that was offered to the district teachers in June, and then, again, to our secondary in August. So, that focus on the micro-based, the micro-assessments, really, we think, helped us, and now, of course, we needed to have a form to track that, and so...
There it is.
So, the form lady got to work.
And you know, the print is smaller here than it is there.
I know, sorry. So, really, all this is this... This was a universal form that each grade level had, and each of the yellow boxes, there's four quarters, and they would enter the assessment that they chose to report on for reading and math, the title of it, and then the breakdown of students. Everybody used the same form, it was all collected universally, and it seemed to work really well, despite the micro-print that you're seeing. They saw the full size. But it was just a common tool that we used throughout our building, that we thought we're using again this year, was so successful last year. So, moving on, we got to the end of the year. What happened? We're going to take you through what we played for our staff at the end-of-year staff meeting.
If it works. It took a second. There we go. Yeah.
So, once the school year came to an end, we had a team that went right back to work, tweaking and refining what they had done for common assessments and their scope and sequence. So, I want to introduce Brittany and Pam, are part of our first-grade team.
Hello, thank you for having us today. As Judy and Hope alluded to earlier, the assessment scores that we were seeing, we just were not happy with. And as you can imagine, as teachers at the forefront of this all, it was very frustrating. We really felt like, you know, we've been teaching together for a while, we had the curriculum, we had the knowledge, and just weren't seeing the results that we had hoped for or were challenging our students to achieve. So, given the opportunity in the summer of 2014, as stated before, we went back to the drawing board, and we reviewed and unraveled all of our Common Core reading state standards, consisting of reading literature, informational text, foundational skills, writing, speaking and language, and language. And Pam and I, just as representatives of the first-grade team, sat down and looked at all of our Common Core state standards. And what we did is, basically, used research. We used our common judgment and just years of teaching, and we placed... I'm going to walk over here, is that okay? So, we placed estimated quarters as to where we wanted our students to be able to achieve or mastery of all of these skills. And this is still a work in progress, and we're in year two of this right now, and we're still tweaking where we feel our kids should be at, just based off of what we saw last year. But along with that, we also came up with, as we talked about, quarterly, or common assessments, to challenge our kids to see how they were doing in each area. We felt like... We felt like, you know, we knew we were teaching all these standards, but we just didn't quite know where our kids were at at any given moment. And so, these assessments have been really nice to keep kind of in our back pocket, because we can give them as frequently as we need to, to make sure that we are reaching every single one of our students. And so, with that said, I'm going to introduce Pam, as she shares with you what we did from there.
Maybe. That's okay. We took that base and took all of our resources and came up with a weekly plan that we share with the rest of our grade level. It keeps us all teaching at the same common pacing, and it also helps us to come back to those Common Core standards. And so, each week, we looked through all of our resources and put them down so that we're common-paced, and then, the blues are all hyperlinked. So, for our new teachers, this year, we have two brand-new staff members. We share this with them, and then, they just have to hyperlink to each of these things, and they have everything that they need, and we can ensure that we're all teaching the same thing at the same time. So, no matter which first grader is at Bridgewater, they're being taught the exact same thing each day.
So, that theme was brought that ties the science in, so it ties our science and our social studies and our language.
And with the screen that I had before, what I failed to mention was that, when tying together all those different quarterly assessments, we needed to find assessments that we were already doing, so we didn't have to reinvent the wheel, but then also fill in the holes of pieces that were missing. And one of the fabulous assessments that we came upon as we were researching is this phonemic awareness and phonics assessment for first graders. And this assessment is aligned with the Common Core state standards for first grade to assess child's progress with phonemic awareness and phonics. And after talking with Hope and Judy, we learned that, once they hit second and third grade, that's kind of what's missing from our foundational first graders is this phonics piece. So, this is really what's driving our PLCs this year, and we're really enjoying it. We're using this assessment. It's nice, because it has... You can see at the top, there's a baseline, so you could give it three times a year if you'd like. We actually use it more frequent than that, because we feel we want to keep on top of these kids as best as we can. But it's nice, because at the beginning of the year, you can see they're really testing beginning sounds, ending sounds, medial sounds, and short vowels, which is developmentally appropriate for first graders at that time. We've now kind of moved into the second category of diagrams and consonant blends, which is right where our kids should be at reading, those are the words they're seeing in their text. And we feel like if a kid is really struggling in that area, they are in need of some intervention, which is what Pam is going to show you next.
So, we use kind of a two-tier process to our intervention. We have... We are quite blessed with the colleges that we have in town, and our wonderful parents and retired teachers come back. And so, based on that one phonemic screener, which we particularly like because it's quick and it gives us really good information, it take... The kids read 10 words, so it's fairly quick, it doesn't take away from instruction. And then, based on that, we flex group in the afternoon, and I take the kids that are most needy and do a pretty intense phonics, and Brittany takes the kids that are at grade level or above, and we differentiate within that. And then, the second part of that is that we have an intervention cart right outside our classroom, and... our classroom, and this is a bin that has our blends intervention, because that's what we're doing right now, we'll move to digraphs the end of December. But our volunteers come in, and this is what they see, the directions are all written up for them, so that they can just quickly read through it. They pull everything out of the bin and just choose one of the activities, do it with the kids. And then, after they spend 10 times with the volunteers, then we retest them, and if they need more, then we give them more, and if they've mastered it, they've mastered it, and we move on.
Okay, so as you can see, our first grade teachers have a huge job in front of them, and they, it's not about, it's not about more assessments, but it's about using the assessments that they already have. So, you know, when we're, Dr. Richardson was talking about all the new assessments coming our way, you know, this is, the use of assessments was with purpose, and our teachers do a nice job of taking that into their PLCs and then making that work for students. So, when we got back to school this fall, obviously, there were some things that we needed to celebrate as well, but also bringing people up to speed, because in terms of the data, our teachers need to know the data in order to move ahead or know where to start with their students. Again, this presentation really highlighted the fact that we, none of us can do this alone, we have to do this together.
You know, as I was looking at those videos, I think, how fortunate we are to be here with bearing good news. And it's a little unnerving, too, to think, okay, we are ready to do it again, but also know how challenging and difficult it is, and also appreciate the work of our teachers who really make this happen. So, I really want to thank them. And as you can see, I get to share the good news here, these are the 2015 results. This is for our first and second grade.
This is second grade math, and we went from 194 to 196. And to just make a point down here, the national mean is 192. So, not only did we improve, but we also are above the national mean. And math, same with reading, and the same pattern goes through for first grade in both the year and math.
MCA results, you can see that we had significant improvement in every test, which we're really proud of. And again, we feel like the attention to the steps along the way kind of led us here, but the pressure is on to repeat.
So, we get to start with our last slides here. Bottom line is, we have lots of layers of support for our students. We've got our Common Core curriculum that we're using. Obviously, we've got a wonderful special education program. There we go. We've been blessed with ADSES, which is nice. I don't have no idea. Just click. Okay? Our title services?
Reading and Math Core, in this year, we have two Reading Core members. We use Accelerate Northfield volunteers quite heavily, as Pam and Britt alluded to in first grade, and they are really great resources in our classrooms. Enrichment opportunities for our students who are already showing mastery of our standards, those include book clubs, and then the use of volunteers to do programs like hands-on equations or novel studies.
And then, of course, we have also our parents and caretakers that support learning at home. And PTO, who has worked tirelessly, our president is already getting Booster-Thon underway to help support our school.
So, bottom line is about giving students wins, what I need to succeed. And when we talk about layers of support, we have a little visual, taste-tempting thing that we'd like to present.
Cake!
Did you say cake?
I was going to say, some nights, it all comes together. It's a wonderful deal.
It's differentiated in terms of you can choose your flavor.
There's only one kind of cake.
Yeah, carrot is fine. Oh, my gosh, you guys.
I was going to say, and it is layered. There are layers in this cake.
And you have your wins on your cake.
Look at that. Did you see? It says wins on it, exactly.
Well, Joel, you might as well pack it up, dude.
Should we all pose with our wins?
Joel's going to run to his office and dig out old sticks of gum or something.
He probably has some left over cake.
Oh, my gosh. All right, well, that was an amazing presentation and certainly a fabulous conclusion, but board members, are there questions or comments?
That was what Joel was supposed to bring?
I'll remember, I'll remember. So, board members, questions or comments? Ellen?
So, I have one comment and one question. So, my first comment was, what I loved was how you framed it about, this is all about getting kids to have opportunities later. You know, it's not just about this numbers game that we're trying to play, which, the numbers are important, and what they mean is that these opportunities that you've provided, you know, this foundation for it, the students is phenomenal. So, this is really wonderful, and now you have these ambitious goals. So, can you tell me a little bit about what's the secret strategy this year, just kind of keep going with what you've been doing?
Correct. Yeah, we're going to stay the course. We've got things to work on in terms of, in reaching the needs of individual students. Every group of teachers has a new group of students, and again, looking into what they need to be successful. And you're absolutely correct, it's not about, it's not about passing one test or another, but it's the fact that if a student doesn't know how to read by the time they leave elementary, their chance for having opportunities down the road are nil to almost none. So, we have to make sure that they know how to read. We have to make sure they know how to do their foundational math skills. We also have to make sure in terms of climate, that they know how to behave, they know how to get along and work as a team, work in partnerships with other students. We have to make sure of those things so that they are successful down the road, so that when the middle school teachers get them, the high school teachers get them, they have the opportunity to be successful, without that, they don't even have the opportunity.
Margaret?
I'm wondering, how much training is needed for these parent volunteers and tutors and so on, and who does the training, and how much staff time is involved there?
Meet the trainers.
Well, when I write the interventions, at least for our grade level, I try and write them so that they're scripted. So, it'll say exactly what the volunteer says to the student, and then if the student responds this way, this is how you respond. We do a lot of teaming, so that Mrs. Elderbush might take some of the students, so that I can go out and train the volunteers and watch them. And then, we also have our awesome RTI coaches that come down and help train our volunteers. And we're very fortunate, we get a lot of our same volunteers back.
Oh, great.
I've had most of them start as freshmen, and we have them all the way through their senior year.
Because you have 15 different volunteers, and nine are returning from last year.
College volunteers, yeah.
Yes, they're fabulous. It's nice because we can use our prep and before school and after school to train these students and what we would like. And then, when we're teaching, they can come down with the college volunteers and they sit with them and make sure that everything is going as planned.
And as you can imagine, these ladies are fabulous communicators, and they will email their volunteers and let them know how their kids have really done, and that it's really because of the support that these volunteers have offered. So, I also think that's a really huge, they feel like they have a purpose, that they're not just coming to do something that is busy work, and that it really is very meaningful.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, I just had, well, first of all, congratulations, this is an amazing presentation and of your amazing results, and it's obviously the efforts of a lot of people. And I was thinking, last year, you had the Rock Star fourth and fifth grade PLCs presenting, and this year, you have first grade, so they're everywhere, right? So, it's very good. And I just wanted to commend you for continuing your school climate goal. We didn't have a chance to touch on it so much tonight, because there were so many other things to talk about, but you did in a very indirect way, obviously, too, but that you've stayed the course on a goal for five years. And I think, obviously, above and beyond the goals that you're measuring with your site objective, you're doing so much more in your building. And I think that obviously has really credited to the results you're getting. I mean, those kids in your building feel warm and safe and supported, and those relationships that they're building are obviously coming back to great rewards in terms of their academic success as well. So, you're really touching on that huge, important aspect of a student's life, and that's as commendable as academic support as well.
Thank you.
So, thank you, you guys did a great job, and thanks for the treats.
Thank you.
We usually only get treats when the child nutrition people show up.
And that's not till April.
And this would be not the kind of treat we'd get.
I told you had carrots.
Last year, it was hickama.
It would be, yeah, we'd get hickama.
We'd get hickama.
So, this is a lot better.
And we don't get hickama until April. So, to have something in November is pretty cool.
Well, you can have your cake and eat it, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, wonderful, wonderful.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
And also, thank you, Kim, for tuning everybody in on PowToon. I see PowToon now is everywhere, isn't it? Yeah, I was going to say, we'll need a new presentation tool next year, obviously.
Okay, so we will move on now to Joel Lear presenting Northfield High School. And just as a reminder, there was a copy of the PowerPoint presentation in your table file.
Well, good evening, everyone, good evening again, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to present our site improvement plan, our progress report and site improvement plan. And I will be honest with you, the information that I share in this plan every year, it's exciting to talk about, because it really is kind of the lifeblood of what is changing and evolving in our schools. The actual act of being up here in front of you doesn't fill me with quite that level of excitement. So, when people like Scott Peterson, who's a veteran social studies teacher in our building, comes to me and says, "I'm working on my administrative licensure, anything you want me to do, I'll do it."
There we go.
And so, I start combing through the list of potential things that I could hand off to somebody. And this one was an opportunity for Scott to get before you and share some of our information about our site improvement plan. The reality is that what's going on in our school is really exciting, and so, I was prepared to hand off about half of it, but said I wanted to keep my talons in at least part of it, so that we kind of team up. But I will begin by turning it over to Scott Peterson, and then we'll join him in a few minutes after I finish my piece of cake.
I was told that when I go in front of the school board, I should wear a blue shirt, because that'll impress them. Good tip, but he didn't say anything about bringing cake. Maybe if we have to come back for a second meeting, we can go ahead and do that. What we'll be talking about tonight is our site improvement progress report from the year 2014, 2015, and then show you what the plan is for this year, this current school year 2015, 2016. So, the annual objectives that we have at the high school are to improve our school climate, to make everybody living and working in a safe and very functional environment, and to improve our student achievement. And to do that, here is the toolbox that we are working with, that we worked with during the previous school year, from our PLCs meeting every Wednesday, all the way on down through the standards biology and standards chemistry class. Students and staff have access to a variety of tools to help them, to help every student achieve the level of success that we deem necessary at Northfield High School. During the previous school year, our passing rate, our goal was to have a passing rate, to have every student pass their class, and we achieved that with 94% of the students had a successful attempt at passing courses. That was up from the previous year. And with that being said, then the bar gets set even higher, as you're going to see here in a couple of minutes. We wanted to make our current rate go up to about 96, which is a very ambitious, but I think a very obtainable goal, knowing the resources that we have at our disposal here at the high school. So, what this means for us is that annually, we are going to continually work towards getting our students, to get every student in our high school, to have a zero failure rate. It's going to take an incredible amount of resources, incredible amount of work, but the way things are set up right now, this should hopefully be very obtainable in the near future. In addition to that, we will further implement the MTSS, the multi-tiered system of support. It has been growing mightily over the past number of school years, and I think it's going to be a very successful tool for our students and our staff. And then, obviously, we'll take a look at what the data holds in the future, so we can adjust our goals as necessary to meet the changing needs in our high school. As far as this school year goes, we have three objectives that we're going to be trying to achieve. The first one is that our MTSS team will look at math, MCA, academic achievement, and other data used to identify students that they will support and create classroom interventions that will increase the student's academic progress. As I mentioned earlier, we had 6.8% of our students fail a course, at least one course during the previous school year. We're going to try to get that to 96 over this school year. And I can tell you, when the data is not in to the MTSS team when they ask, they come knocking on our doors and say, "We need data, and we need data right now." knocking on our doors and say, "We need data and we need data right now." Because they meet and they meet long, they meet hard, pouring over every student, what's going on in the classroom, why are they missing homework, why are they struggling on tests, what can we do to intervene, what can we do to support you? And it has been a really cool thing, especially this year, to see that MTSS team go door-to-door in the high school to talk about each and every individual kid, what can we do to help them, what can we do to ensure that they're going to be successful? So, it's a, it's a very fluid process, but one that I think is off to a very awesome start this school year. Another objective that we have is going to be an annual thing and that is to improve our school climate. And there are a variety of things that you're going to be looking at up there. From the 14-15 school year, we thought that about a third of the high school staff felt that expected behaviors were being taught directly in the classroom. 51% of the staff thought that behaviors were defined clearly. And that there was a little over a third of the staff felt that distinctions were made between the office and classroom managed behaviors and that those behaviors were very clear. As far as this goes, our school climate, it's simple things like how do students act in the hallway? How do students act in the lunchroom? How do students act in the bathroom? And to try to get it where the school climate is comfortable and safe for every, for everyone is a very awesome and realistic goal and one that, it seems simplistic to you, but when you bring it up with the kids, like, oh, yeah, if I drop a piece of paper on the floor, I should pick it up. If someone needs help finding out, finding where to go in the hallways, they're willing to help out. So, these are things that we're working towards, as well as can you get to class on time? Can you be in class daily? The level of respect with peers, the level of respect with adults. So, our goal this year is that we're going to get 100% of the staff to be using the three keys, our minor incident report, should, we don't have every student in our building behaving the expected way. And then we felt that based off the data last year, 95% of our students and staff felt that would have been obtainable based off last year's data. And then the continued goal is that we will increase the level of staff and students that will understand these and will expect these on a daily and yearly basis. The toolbox that we have at our disposal is very similar to the one that you saw from last year, whether it be the MTSS or the PLC teams that meet regularly. We have the 9th grade academy, structured study centers, which is a very fluid study center. I don't know if you've ever had data to see or peek in at those, but it's not your average study hall where you can sit back and just read a book and relax. You literally have teachers, in a way, in a good way hovering over a student to make sure they're working on things that need to be done. They can no longer just tell a teacher that, "Oh, yeah, I'm done with my homework. I don't need to do anything today." The teacher can check through a variety of sources that, "Oh, no, you're not done with your stuff and we are going to work on this and we're going to help you in these areas to improve and to get our failure rate to where it needs to be." The Achievement Seminar, Achievement Reading, Read 180, a couple of classes that can help out with students as well. A little bit newer this year that Mr. Leir is going to be talking about in a moment will be the Student Academic Coaches, the push-in reading intervention, and then a couple main stations from last year, the standards biology and the standards chemistry class. As far as our school climate goes, we will continue with our PBIS implementation as well as continue to go with the MTSS.
And specific to, you know, I think about the Site Improvement Plan as the paper that describes the excitement, and this is the part where I get to kind of talk about the excitement in a way that hopefully brings it to life. And what I, I'm really intrigued about this web is that I go back a couple of years in our improvement plans and our strategies at the high school that were designed to really get at student struggles, and none of these things were in place. I mean, most of these things have come about over the last few years, as we've said. And really, I would say, I don't, I don't know that we necessarily made a conscious effort to say, "Look what programs like Torch are doing with our students." But I do remember the day I was actually sitting at a reception at Carlton to celebrate the Torch program. And it really hit me that what, what the success around the Torch program is built on, the lifeblood of that program, is that they get in front of each individual student and help them with what it is that they need help with, that assist them with what they need assistance with, and really help them overcome those obstacles that are sitting in front of each individual student. And I think that historically in education, we have, we've been great and we continue to be great at hitting that massive chunk, and I don't even say the massive chunk in the middle, but a massive chunk of the student population. But it is those, those edges. It's the moving from a pretty good passing rate to 100% passing rate. And those types of leaps where we haven't been the quickest learners in terms of approaching it and saying, "Well, what if we get in front of each individual student and tackle some of these issues head-on?" And I want to draw your attention to this web, not only as I just kind of briefly explain the different elements of it, but I want you to look at the rectangular boxes that sit next to it. And that's where it tells you the helpers and the helped. And I want you to consider each of those ratios, because as we look at things like the Achievement Seminar in the lower right, we have two teachers with 12 kids. The AdSIS program has allowed us to work, have four programs, so an adult in front of each of those programs for a total of 23 kids. Upper right-hand corner, structured study centers, 90 students and 11 staff members working with 90 students. And if you think about, if you're familiar with what our average class size is, you know that that's really what we are trying to accomplish. We are, we are saying, "We can no longer expect great things with passing rates. We can't jump from 90 to 100." The Northfield community has given us great numbers. 90% of the students pass their classes and so on. But, but how do we make that leap? And this is the strategy that really, so far, is demonstrating to us that, that we're going to be able to make those leaps. A couple of items that you may or may not be familiar with that I just wanted to draw your attention to. Obviously, you're familiar with the academy and how that program has functioned over the last six years. The top box there, the standards classes, again, we are in our second year of that Read 180 you're familiar with, but Odysseyware is a system that actually Darrell at the ALC brought to the ALC as kind of an independent study program. And two years ago, he said, "You know, you really should get in on this." And I said, "Well, I don't know." And last year, he said, "You know, you really should get in on this." And then we had a couple of staff members here at the high school in recent weeks who said, "You know, we really should get in on that." And sometimes it takes three hits to the side of the head to it. Chris is nodding immediately when I make that comment. But, and so, we moved ahead with that. We have students, and again, it really gets about, one, it's individualized attention for those struggles, but two, it's also about acknowledging the fact that we need to provide various avenues for kids to, to meet their, their academic goals. And, and I use that term purposely, meet their academic goals, because the students who are struggling also have goals. I visited with a student a couple of weeks ago who, struggling mightily, talking about going off to college. The goal was clear. It was the pieces that needed to be in place to get to that goal that were, were really causing him grief. And so, I think that it's, it's really important that we keep that peace in mind as well. But, but I'm really pleased with those ratios. And obviously, the AdSIS funding at the bottom. Chris and I have talked over the last four years about the career and tech ad path and connecting our students to local businesses. And one of the pieces that has always been this obstacle is, well, we don't have anybody who can just design time to make those connections and build those relationships. And similarly, we looked at some of these strategies and said, "Oh, if only we had someone who could commit that kind of time to it and set aside that part of the day." And really, the AdSIS funding has done that in the, in the, in the human likeness of Carrie Duba and Lisa Battaglia, who really now are dead-centered in developing these programs, training students in the academic student coaching model, and just really getting at those individual pieces that we really didn't have time, I shouldn't say really didn't have time for, but we didn't have someone invested at that, the scale to which we really needed to be invested. All right, academic student coaches. This was one where I said, "I just needed to get out of the way and let people do the good work." Marnie Thompson, actually, last, early last year, talked about, "What if we..." We have students who are TAs in our building, so in other words, they serve as kind of an assistant, if you will, for staff members in different capacities. And said, "What if we were to take that model and train students to be coaches, academic coaches, and work with students?" You know, and there was this little part of my brain that said, "Gosh, that would be great if that would work, but I would hope that they wouldn't be sitting around twiddling their thumbs hour after hour because no one comes with that help." The AdSIS staff, so Lisa and Carrie, bridge that gap of the students waiting around. They go get the students and they match them up and they put them together. So, we have had, to this point in the year, the first quarter, 300, over 300 hours of one-on-one coaching time. That doesn't mean 300 hours of where the coaches are sitting in a room waiting. That means 300 hours where they are engaged with students who are, are seeking academic help. And 60 unduplicated, and I've got to turn ahead so I make sure I get my, my data right, 60 unduplicated, so that means that there are 60, 60 unduplicated students who have accessed the student coaches and then 185 duplicated visits. So, again, 185 times in the first quarter alone, students have accessed our academic coaches. One of the side benefits, which has been the most enriching piece of this whole thing, is that question, we've had the question with Rally, we've had the question with Link Leaders, what type of student do you kind of go after? You don't want all of the same type of students. So, we've had this incredible accidental benefit of students who are put in the role of student coaches, academic coaches, who you might look at the student body with someone who's familiar with the kids 9 through 12 and say, "Well, I don't know. They might be okay." But we have students in there who have really blossomed as leaders and blossomed in the, in the peer relationship model, simply given a chance to function in that role. And that's been exciting to see because that was never, we never set out to benefit the coaches. We set out to benefit students with whom they were working, and that was an unintended benefit of, of the piece, which has been really enriching. You can see also the grid on the left. So, this is by grade level on the left-hand side, the students that are accessing the tutoring. On the right is how they end up there. 59% are pursuing it on their own and then 41% are recommended by a teacher. And I love that model, that if you, if you create it, if you build a system that's going to support kids, they will show up. And if they don't show up, teachers will help them show up, whichever way it takes to get them to be successful. The academic student coaches on the left is the grid. This is how they are helping. And one of the conversations, I'm just going to, I'm going to trust that you can read these different demographics or statistics, but the second to the last listing, have a test read. And that we have 21% of the students that are, that are accessing student coaches to have tests read. There's always an adult in the room so that that situation is obviously kept secure as a testing situation has to be. But one of the conversations that we've had over the last couple of years, you may know that, that tests being read aloud is an accommodation that, that is provided in 504s or IEPs. But typically, we haven't talked about it in the mode of giving that opportunity to our, our entire student population. And we began talking about it at department chair level, and really, it was, it was interesting to engage in the staff in a conversation about, "Well, what if we free up a potential barrier that according to documentation, isn't a barrier or shouldn't be a barrier, but it might be just simply because, you know, you hear people talking about test anxiety, you hear people talking about different, different obstacles that aren't documentable." And I would draw your attention to one particular student who, as an example, and this is an extreme example, I acknowledge that, but a student who had a 17 on the ACT when, when they read it themselves and a 26 when it was read for them. And so, we really have stepped back from that notion of saying, "Well, if they're capable, they're capable," and saying, "Well, what is it that we're really trying to accomplish? And are students being given every opportunity to demonstrate their knowledge and their learning? And are we removing all of this, kind of the superfluous obstacles that might get in the way of that, that doesn't allow them an accurate depiction of those, of those abilities?" And then on the right-hand side, very briefly, are the list of, of subject areas that are being addressed by our student academic coaches. All right, AdSIS, which is becoming liquid gold in a hurry at the high school just because of all of the opportunities it's providing. On the left, you see a listing of the programs that we've been accessing with our AdSIS funding. Most of these, I couldn't tell you intimately about them, but certainly Carrie Duba and Lisa Battaglia could, as well as other people who are working in our intervention system. But Read 180, obviously, you're aware of. Ilet, Interactive Towns and Vocabulary and Six Way Comprehension are essentially programs designed to get at student reading support. And as, as we talk about all of the complicated data about why students struggle, reading ultimately is the one that we come back to, being if we fix the reading issues, we're going to fix virtually all of the academic struggles that students have. And on the right-hand side, this is the, the means through which those, those supports are, are used. We have Lisa Battaglia, for example, providing a setting reading seminar over here. 33% of the students are in a reading seminar where they're, they're going to a class called Reading Seminar and learning reading strategies. But then she also pushes into classrooms where she's looking at reading strategies within those specific content areas. And in the academy, obviously, there's a strong reading component as part of the academy, so 37% of our students being serviced through, and this again, is just the AdSIS funding support for students. And then study centers also are opportunities where we can get in and provide those, those reading supports to students who meet them in the structured study center. All right, so new in 2015, 2016, and this is where, where Scott talked about the attainable goal of 100% passing rate, which is, it can be staggering when you first, when you first think about that. But I really believe the way we are approaching this with the individualized attention for students at risk, that that's an attainable number. And I really see, see this site improvement process of just ratcheting it up and up and up until we get there here in the not-too-distant future. But academic coaches, and this is not, again, and I want to reinforce, that these students are trained in the model of academics, academic coaching. They're not just thrown in a room and said, "Go help a kid with algebra." They are trained in the methodology and it's, it's really been a fun thing to watch the students get the training and then go put it in action and to see how they respond to situations that, some of which they're, they're trained for, and others, they just simply have to respond because of what they know about the, the coaching model. The PBIS program is, we are moving forward with that. And one of the pieces that we really kind of had to look ourselves in the mirror, so to speak, and said that, you know, "We've, we've designed a program here and really haven't asked for a lot of student input." Because the training is so significant with PBIS. It's a national program. It's a program that's been utilized in many schools across the country. And we just, we felt like we needed to take a step back. And there were some pieces of it that were very effective in terms of kind of getting our, our whole school on a common, common understanding of student expectation, student behavior expectation and staff behavior expectation. But we really felt that there were some, some pieces at play that needed to be revised or at least looked at again. And we thought the key to that would be to bring a group of students together to meet and talk about it and really ask them what they believe our school needs. And so, we've, are in the process of assembling a group of 15 students. Mark Enzru, we'll actually be meeting with them on a regular basis to get their feedback and kind of help further plan the implementation of our PBIS program. MTSS System Oversight Team, teachers, counselors, admin. Scott talked about the going door-to-door. Literally, every time I turn around, the MTSS team is saying, "Well, we've got a meeting." And I'm going to say, "Another meeting?" I don't really say that, but, but that's really the intensity with which this, this system is in play. And it incorporates our EL staff, some special ed staff, support staff, teaching staff, guidance staff, administrative staff, really just from all walks of our student support system. And, and they are meeting on a monthly basis as well as quarterly, monitoring students. And this last, this is my favorite part, and I hope you'll get a kick out of this. They meet once a month on Fridays to go over the data and then they have a particularly large data review at midterm and then at the end of quarters when we get the, essentially the student progress report. And Marnie Thompson, who is kind of oversight of MTSS, came to me and said, "We have our meeting, you know, this Friday." And I was like, "Okay, good. What, what important part am I going to play?" She said, "Could you supervise the cafeteria?" So, I spent that entire meeting in the cafeteria talking with kids as the, the main players in, in the MTSS model are meeting in a conference room. And literally, they are pouring over gobs and gobs of data that a number of years ago, we, we probably knew existed in this kind of theoretical sense, but certainly didn't see it as, as something that we would be utilizing literally at an individual kid level to, to help support learners. Tutoring in a combination center, Odysseyware in, for in-school credit recovery. So, we have students who might be behind or too far behind to catch up or have failed a quarter or failed a semester. We can get them in the Odysseyware program and get them those credit recovery pieces immediately, rather than saying, "Well, at the end of the semester, you can go talk with Darrell and get that taken care of at the ALC." It's just, it's accelerating that process of getting caught up because all of the research about graduation rates and dropout rates in converse is really about being on target for graduation. And then coordinated testing accommodations. And that was kind of the, the reading aloud and so on that are played there. Things that have been going on and continue to go on, exceptional core instruction. We have to acknowledge the fact that our teachers are doing, I mean, listen to the Bridgewater folks. And, and you were there at the National Merit Reception when students have a hard time identifying which of their great teachers they want to recognize. We do have an incredible core instruction. We do have an incredible core instructional team in our district. The ninth grade academy continues to flourish, structured study centers, standards levels classes, achievement seminars, and in the monthly MTSS data meetings. And in November, so this is that meeting I was talking about, so they all sit down around a table and they reviewed 350 student data files, 350 students, about a quarter of our student population to review them. And of those students, then they identified specific interventions for 43 of those that they believe needed additional support to stay on track for passing classes. And so here is what that looks like on paper, or excuse me, on a graph. The failure rate, and I talked about the notion of, is it really realistic to look at 100% passing rate? If you look at the graph on the left, the spike, if you will, at about 15% is the 9-12 passing rate, or excuse me, failure rate in 2013-14. Really, the 14-15 was the first year where we began to expand in earnest the system that kind of I'm describing, where we start looking at kids individually and saying, what do you specifically, Anne, need for your support? And what do you need, Julie, for your support? And in that one year, dropped to that 6.8% as you see in 2014-15. So with that kind of drop over the course of one year, that's why I think we're optimistic about the possibility of really heading toward and hitting eventually that 0%. One piece that I really have appreciated about our MTSS team, that again includes staff members as well, and this came from a couple of teachers on the MTSS team, to say, you know, we've been focusing a lot on passing rates. In other words, not getting Fs. Isn't it time that we up that a notch and say, let's start looking at increasing the As and Bs? And so that's something that really came out of this model of the ongoing process of wanting to achieve a higher passing rate. And so as you look at the, the blue line is As, the orange, if you will, Bs, and then the gray is the Cs. So that's 2014, 2015, 2016. 2016, obviously, is this academic year. Obviously, we're not to 2016 yet. But with the first quarter, as you look at that, the number of As and Bs is increasing and the number of Cs, which should naturally occur if As and Bs are increasing, is something that we would like to continue to key in on as we, again, kind of step that up a notch to say, well, we're doing great things with that passing rate, but now how do we achieve better and better? And if you, you know, as you listen to the Bridgewater notion of this incredible school that did this incredible thing, and now they're saying, now we're going to best that, we have to keep up with the school across the street. And so we're looking at it from that standpoint to say, passing isn't satisfactory. Now what do we do next? All right. With that, I will wrap things up. And Scott and I are available for any questions or comments.
Excellent. Thank you. Board members, questions or comments? Rob?
I guess it's a kind of specific illustration that I was talking to a student who said that she moved from an ESL class to a regular English class and suddenly found herself divorced because there were all these things like MLA style that she'd never heard of before. Now, I have to believe with all these resources that there's something specific that can work there. And just with that specific example, I mean, how would she be identified? How would this specific thing be addressed?
You bet. One of the things that, if you remember the pie chart that said, how do students end up there? And, you know, it's a fairly good mix of the students that are recommended or referred or in a couple of cases, literally walked down to the MTSS room. I think the biggest key, Rob, is that we have a physical presence in the building. Our EL program has been great. Our special ed program has been great. Academy program has been great. What MTSS has done is kind of provided an umbrella over those. And so it is really two people, you know, that are there to examine students individually, programs individually, but also collectively. So at the example that you illustrated there, we are paying much closer attention to those students that leave EL, direct service, and go out into a push-in model like in the sciences or even just what I, you know, call fly on your own, if you will. And so the process that the data team goes through on a weekly and monthly basis really stops that notion of kid goes out and seven weeks later, we find out he or she is struggling. The other piece about that, in addition to the physical presence for the staff, is also the physical presence for the students. They know there's a location, door is always propped open, there are signs throughout the school that say, need a tutor, need a test read, need assistance. One of them is if you need a tutor, it's a QR code that you scan with your iPad and boom, you can actually, it fills out a form and then they come find you. So it's really kind of a multi-pronged approach to that. And really, I think the power of MTSS right now is that students, where we used to do midterm, end of term, end of semester, those types of things, it is happening on a weekly and certainly at very least, a monthly basis. And the richness of teacher referrals is growing by the day as well. You bet.
Other questions or comments? Jeff?
Just a question on our senior graduation rate percentage, and I'm just wondering where that is at, whether that goes up or down. And then based on, you know, maybe state average in schools our size, just as a point of information.
Sure. It does go up and down. We have the luxury of sitting in the mid-90s on a fairly consistent basis. You know, that being said, this last year, our percentage did drop a bit. And then actually, Dr. Richardson and I had kind of talked about that in the beginning stages of this year. And I think, to me, the notion of, well, if you look at the research around, I've been doing a lot of reading and research about the whole, the importance of ninth grade, really why we ended up with the academy as a model here in our school was really in response to that, what, one, is response to the unacceptable failure rate data we were seeing out of our ninth grade population here locally, but also out of the research that said that that ninth grade year is so critical to students staying on track for graduation and those students who stay on track are going to graduate at a ridiculously high percentage. Those who fall behind early are the ones who are going to struggle really to catch up. And so I see, even though we are talking and emphasizing the notion of passing rates and the notion of increasing As and Bs in our student population, both of those two things really directly translate into getting kids through our school on time. And by on time, I mean in four years, because that's the MDE dataset that we use when we refer to graduation rate. So I see that number approaching 100% just as I see the passing rate working towards 100% because the two of them correlate so closely, particularly for that ninth grade group. So our emphasis, the numbers you see here are 9-12. We have spoken over, you know, six years about the number dropping in ninth grade, but really MTSS is really about saying, well, me too, for the sophomores, juniors, and seniors, to really get at that same statistic across the board so that we've got the students who are starting out on track and then staying on track as they get through. So we sit mid-90s, I believe this last year, 94.6. The year before, 96.2, 96.3, excuse me. But I believe, again, 100% is something that's attainable based on this system that we're putting into play.
And then a state average or schools our size, general?
I would have to look that up for you, Jeff.
State average is significantly lower.
I'm sure it is.
And I would say we would be very much in contention with anyone in the Big Nine.
Right.
A follow-up question, I'll make sure the chair.
Sure.
What about the 5% that just aren't graduating? What do we do or what do we give for opportunities to say after, to get their GED or to do whatever else? Or can you discuss the demographic of what that 5% is?
Absolutely. Well, and part of that is, as I mentioned, the Department of Ed reports out a four-year graduation rate. So when we talk about graduation rates, typically, we're talking about students who graduate in the four intended years of our school model. That number jumps significantly when we start looking at a five-year graduation rate and the state does report that. So that kicks us up into that 97, 97.5, 98%. And I'm speaking to an average over the course of three or four years. But that, essentially, I'm going to repeat your question then, about that 2.5, 3%. Those are students for whom, and again, if you're looking at six-year graduation rate, you're looking at the number of students who perhaps are accessing credits through the ALC or, as you mentioned, the GED program. We have, you know, we call it the, well, we don't call it that, but it's essentially the Hope For File. We've got an envelope that's got those diplomas of students who haven't finished yet. And it's really interesting, over the course of time, there's no regular pattern to it, but, you know, we'll get a report from, you know, perhaps an adult ed program in Eagan or the ALC or numerous programs across the region where, you know, so-and-so student has completed this particular credit and they believe it fulfills the rest of your credits for graduation. And so we'll, you know, the student will stop in and then we'll give them their diploma. So it's, it becomes a trickle. I'll be honest with you, it becomes a trickle, but those students are still, they're still out there. And, you know, who's to say that four years is the system that, it makes sense for a lot of kids, but there are certainly those that need to, want to, or decide to take longer. But a lot of them do trickle back.
And Jeff, according to Minnesota Report Card, the 2014 state graduation rate was 81.2%.
And I would say, when you get to that last couple of percent, what you have to also understand is a fairly significant portion of those students are special education students who have the ability to continue until they're 21. And in order to access all of the available support we can provide, oftentimes do not officially graduate until they're 21. So they're not only out six years, they may be out seven years before they finally exercise the actual graduation rate. And the problem is, you know, the calculation is based on a federal requirement and the federal requirement is based on a four-year graduation rate. And the state has pushed back on the feds to try to expand, so they are also looking at five and six-year rates. But if you think about our special ed students, in that 2% or 3% of the students that really require significant additional support, they are most likely going to be 21, which means they really need three years after normal graduation time before they're at a point where they're graduating from high school.
And a shocking way of being helpful, MDE actually brings out the dropout rate in those who are continuing. And just since you're top asked about it, the statewide average for dropouts is 5% in 2014 and Norfield High School was 0.4%.
And kids drop out because they're behind. So if MTSS did the work it's supposed to do, we'll shrink that number to.
Kids don't get behind.
Other questions? Ellen?
So first, I wanted to say that I found this really helpful, the being able to characterize the systems support, because we've heard about MTSS, but having you talk us through what that really looks like on the ground, I think that's really exciting. So my question is probably that I have such a hard time understanding the way the site improvement plans are laid out. So in looking at the PowerPoints and then what I had read prior to that, can you help with the school climate? I was trying to understand, I know that last year was the first year and now this is the second year for the goal, how those goals work? Because it seems like we, maybe last year, the goals were too ambitious and now we've kind of started to have a better sense of how it's going to scale up in terms of the staff feeling expected behaviors are taught directly, that set of goals.
Right.
It seemed like we just moved it a little bit and then we moved a little bit more and now it seems like we're finally getting a sense of maybe what it's going to take.
Yeah. And I would say that, you know, if you, I guess I have seen from the time we, and these are all PBIS related, so it's actually, it's a canned program that gives us information about, from our staff and students that PBIS creates. And if I said I had, we're reading between the lines, what I hear in a lot of these statements is communication of expectations and communications of actions and behaviors. And so, for example, looking at, you know, really those bullets, I think we perceived as an administrative team, as a site improvement team, that we had a fairly clear-cut, consistent, comprehensive knowledge of what expectations were of students. Also, a clear description of what, a clear description of what those expectations were. So how do we articulate the rules and regulations? How do we follow up on the rules and regulations of our school? And I think that when, that step back that you're talking about, I think was kind of a moment where we said, wow, we have some teaching to do. And it's interesting, because we'll take a group of students in a classroom or our student academic coaches and we say, you need some training, because we want to all be on the same page. And I think there's maybe, you know, and this is a fault in us and our system, but we maybe leap to a conclusion that because you are a teacher and you come into a building where other teachers are working, other educators are working, that everyone's going to have an understanding. And I think what those initial goals for PBIS were about, oh, yeah, we are all on board and we all know what we're doing and, oh, wow. And we stepped back and said, well, we don't even know about this, how the office responds to this. Or we don't know that the teacher next door is doing this the same way we are. And so I think that it was a little bit of humble pie to step back and say, well, let's take this in stages and be really articulate and purposeful about making sure teachers have what they need on an individual basis, similar to what we're doing with MTSS and saying, okay, what is it that you need to know? And trying to communicate as, you know, as much as possible to get at those specific details. And I think one of the pieces that, in referencing, and this isn't specific to what staff responds to in the survey, but in terms of looking at that student population, to have that student commission that we're going to employ this year, I think will allow us to have even a better window into the goings-on in the classroom on a daily basis, the hallways on a daily basis, and the cafeterias, even though we have adults in all of those spaces, to really get at the heart of what students perceive. Because, you know, if you remember in years past, we've had student data about staff who feel connected to kids and then the reverse. And there's this dramatic difference between what staff perceive in terms of their connections with students and what students perceive about their connections with staff. And so I think that we really want to get at that notion as it relates to behavioral expectations and climate expectations in our building.
Thanks. Margaret?
Excuse me. First, I just really want to say that I think Norfield High School does an amazing job. I mean, when I hear anecdotes of folks in other high schools and then you think of what happens here, it's just apples and coconuts, basically. But to be commended, so I wanted to say that first so this statement doesn't sound like I'm not very proud of Norfield High School. The students get very savvy about the tests and they know which ones have absolutely no bearing on their own academic future. And I was thinking, it starts at the middle school, but it gets strong at the high school where they just don't basically try much on some of the assessments. How does that affect your data and do you build that in?
That's a great question. I mean, the truth of the matter is that we've evolved for better, for worse. We are in a place where we are, where we're testing students less frequently with those tests that they perceive to be meaningless. So for example, at the, you know, junior level, one of the tests that we're using as a, you know, as a state-supported test is the ACT. So juniors came into that test and they may have come in saying, well, this is going to be my practice and then I'm going to take it, quote unquote, for real. But I think that we have responded to kind of that shift from the state expectations to say, okay, how do we maximize some of those pieces? We've also been very forthright with students to say, you know, without other types of data, these are the pieces that we're going to be utilizing to determine, you know, placements in academic support programs. You know, and we've been doing it all along in other areas where it might be an advanced track in science, it might be an advanced track in English. So I think it's really about that transparency with students to say, you know, we realize that this isn't going to make or break your transcript, but it will determine how we go about that placement process. And I would just illustrate that example with our incoming ninth graders that we, where we use multiple data points to determine placement in the ninth grade academy. And oftentimes, we will hear, we heard for a number of years, well, they didn't really try on that test, that they'd known this test was for that purpose. You know, and my first reaction was, well, why wouldn't you try? But then the secondary response was, well, maybe we should make sure that they understand that those are the ways we're using those particular assessments. That they do, they count in the sense that someone's looking at them, someone's using that data and responding to that data. And so the middle school has been very helpful in working with Greg Jellino and his team, really to kind of impress upon, particularly the eighth graders, is that last kind of moment before they move over here with math placement, with academy placement, just in general, getting a landscape of where the students are at academically, that it might not go onto a transcript someplace, but it certainly is something that we're poring over and utilizing in our decision-making.
Great. Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Other questions?
I just had two quick questions. Well, one housekeeping thing, we, for some reason, didn't get that last slide.
Didn't come through.
So if you could just get that to Denise, she can email it to us.
This one? Okay, absolutely. You bet.
Yes, and I agree with Ellen, this was just really excellent to see. And just as you had said, where you have gone with MTSS is just really incredible, really incredible. And I'm glad you touched on the QR reader. And I'm glad you touched on the QR reader, because I had seen the flyers in the school, throughout the high school, and I think that is so cool, because there's just no, you know, the kid can just do it and nobody even knows and it just somehow you can get that process going. How has that been working? Have you found kids accessing help that way?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, this is going to be kind of, I'm going to feel like Matt for a moment as I was sitting, sitting back here, Carrie Duba who...
You're the old girl.
Wow.
Whoa.
I'm not sitting next to him at the table tomorrow.
I had yours.
Carrie had provided the information about the student academic coaches. And she, so she had sent me this text message to kind of add to some of the information that I was sharing here on the slide and, and she said, also, you should let them know that I've recruited five more coaches since we've been so busy. So if you think about Carrie Duba and Lisa Vitale specifically, and we have other people working in the MTSS, I mean, we have a lot of people working in MTSS, but those are the people who's dedicated FTE for this purpose. And if you think of them like the oversight, that, that really the, the student academic coach piece is really a good indicator of how busy that, that space, those offices, the office and classroom are, in fact, they've, they've actually expanded. It's now a suite. They've taken another storage space over and now we're using about thirty-three percent more space than we initially had, had set aside for them. But that's a great indicator of the frequency with which students are accessing it. And so we started with, like I said, we started with eighteen trained coaches, we now have twenty-three. And part of that is, is the need, but part of it is also keeping those numbers small because those academic coaches are working one-to-one. In a rare circumstance, maybe with a couple of students who happen to have the same item to work on, but for the most part, it's a, it's a one-to-one relationship. And so it's this classroom in the H Wing and then there's an office space and then there's a little corridor that goes to another office space and they're spread out in a way that allows them to focus in on their individual tasks. But that's a great indicator of, of your question.
Okay, and then I just had one last question. The, we're only into November, but is there any feedback on, from the staff about the Casper management system and how that's working in the classrooms for them?
Yeah, you know, I would certainly say better. And what I use as my moniker of better is, is the number of staff who are, and Matt and I talked about this at length, one of the, at length, the whole question of, of open access versus restricted access. And for me, the biggest piece of the Casper system was to give those staff who struggle with that notion of open access and, I guess I would call the loss of control, and that means a lot of things to a lot of people. But it was, it was giving staff the sense of, of comfort and control that would allow them then to explore beyond kind of how they use the technology. And in my classroom visits, I'd, you know, I would, I'm thinking of three specific teachers in my, my head who are utilizing their devices at a, at a much broader and much more in-depth level because they have that peace of mind. So I don't have technical statistical data that says, you know, these pieces yet, but, but that would be my anecdotal data, that three rooms where I would say it was being very much underutilized by great staff because of that, that, kind of that bridge to control. And it's not the be-all, end-all of, of, you know, computer clampdown, but I think it's provided that access for, for those staff that were maybe a little bit hesitant because of the open system to say, okay, I don't have to worry about that, now let's explore how this device can be used in the classroom.
Good, thank you, excellent. Okay, well, Scott and Joel, thank you very much for excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay, that concludes our items for discussion and report this evening. There are no items for individual action, so at this point we'll move on to approval of the consent grouping. And as a reminder, there were a number of personnel items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Margaret, second. Second by Ellen. Any discussion questions? Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have, move on to items for information. First one, transformational technology lease update, and we have Kim Briskie here to present that.
Well, good evening. I think there are some benefits to going last. Hope Linkson told me, Kim, you're supposed to talk to Donita when you're coming to the board meeting and tell her where you want to be on the agenda. And I said, I have pretty good access to Donita, but I have now, I jotted some notes of things that I could, that I could come back to, because I got pretty excited hearing all of the school improvement plan conversations. So one of the things I, I just wanted to do is come back, a lot of my presentation, I think you've seen it in the, in the table file, is, is really recapping what we, what we went over in April when we approved the, the next phases of, of leases of iPads. And so bringing it back to what we're doing here, and you've heard some of this in the, in the conversations that we just had, and so I'm going to let you look at the things that we're doing about, you know, our educational excellence, about reaching all of our students, that came through loud and clear in those plans, and preparing our students to engage in their world. I was thinking, while, while Brittany and Pam were presenting about their assessments and the ways that they're assessing their first graders, I just did a presentation at the Curriculum Leaders of Minnesota and Technology Leaders of Minnesota conference on Friday, and that presentation was on formative assessment. And one of the quotes that I used was that our, as a nation, our kids are, are overtested but under-assessed. And so we're testing them, but that assessment data that's really informing our instruction is what we need to focus on. And that, that quote comes from Doug Reeves. And then were the things that Joel was talking about with MTSS, that QR code, well, we sat down with Carrie Duba and we went, how can we make this work? Well, how would, how would students know to get, to get to this, to the center and what, how would they, how would people that are working in the MTSS room know that a kid needs help and when there's going to be somebody available to schedule a tutor to be there and such? So we set up a separate Google Calendar, had them get this QR code going where they can just sign up for their time and they say what they need and then they know they need to go get a test or not and it's, it's running, it's working, it's good to see. I just met with Carrie Duba today along with Lori Warner and we were talking about how do we gather data about how we're meeting all of our students' needs and how we're getting to those, those ones who need a little extra support and those ones who need a little extra push to go a little further than they're already going. You talk about structured study hall here at the high school. I had a request today from, from an EA that works in the structured study hall to request an app so that she could do some instruction with her students. You look at the TIES exceptional teachers that Dr. Richardson talked about at the start with Amanda Heinrichs and Tammy McDonough, just the good things going on in classrooms. Also at TIES, we had several teachers that want to go to the conference and we can't unfortunately send all of them, but we had a couple from Sibley that want to go on Saturday. Not a lot of teachers are willing to give up a Saturday right before the holidays to go and learn about project-based learning, so Paula Bargary and Allison Sweeney will be there on Saturday. Writing teachers, I know I've talked before about Jan Enzroot and using a new tool to revolutionize the writing process so that she's giving feedback as her students are going, that constant assessment and really improving the products that she hits at the end. And now we've got Amy Moeller here at the high school who's jumped on board and goes, oh my gosh, why didn't I try this sooner? And then tomorrow, so all of these are really recent. Tomorrow I'm meeting with Sarah Swan McDonald and Brian Stevens and they are teaching all of our seniors with a new course, right, World Geography and with Econ, and they want to do a joint project that's like a capstone. And so we're looking at what could we do to connect these kids that aren't necessarily in both of these classes at the same time, but that, where they could pull a lot of knowledge together and really synthesize and make a project. So exciting things, I get excited talking about it. So as it relates to transformational technology, really what we're doing is just walking out this plan. This slide is just an exact copy of what I presented in April. This was the plan of what we would do with our three steps of lease renewal. So nothing new there, except for the point one, we've already done it. So that's kind of exciting. And then we look at our current reality where we are moving into that second phase, that January lease that we were looking at. And I was looking at numbers and going, wait a minute, we got to make sure that we're covering all of our needs here. So I went back and did some, some looking at numbers, and so if you ever looked at that link at the bottom, there's a lot of numbers there. I took all of the enrollment reports that Donita sends out and took that monthly data from each year going back to twelve, thirteen, and just looked at what we have in each grade level and then what we have in each of kind of the segments for whom we lease iPads. And so looking at K three, having one for every two students, fourth and fifth grade, having a mini for every student, sixth through eighth grade, and ninth through twelfth grade, having that one-to-one iPad program. And so just looking at the range that we see there and thinking, okay, when we enter into this lease that could go for three or four years, are we going to have enough iPads to provide them for our students and is our enrollment changing at all? And so you can see our minimum since twelve to thirteen and our maximum since twelve to thirteen, that thirteen fifty-nine is right now, actually, in nine, twelve. And the difference there, so some of the fluctuation that we see in those segments of our student And then I looked at the start and the end, because there's just too many data points with every month, so I looked at the start and the end of each year from twelve to thirteen until right now. And I looked at twelve to thirteen because I figure that's when we were planning transformational technology in order to introduce those student iPads in thirteen to fourteen. And, and you can see the numbers there for, this is grade six through twelve only, looking at about twenty-two hundred students in grade six through twelve, and now we're at about twenty-three hundred. And so previously I had based on our, our numbers last year when we gave those numbers for, in the, in the spring for what we were looking for for this year. And we're, we're up in students even from the end of last year to the beginning of this year and I'm going, I've got to make sure we have enough iPads. I've done some scrounging for iPads and it's not enjoyable. So I would like to avoid it if we can. This is the same kind of pricing that I presented last April when I came here and I, I think you, you had a chance to look at it, I'll, I'll give you kind of the more overview in the next slides, but we were looking at the iPad Air two. We were hypothesizing that it would come down in price because a new and, new and improved iPad would come and take its place and it would be the most recently kind of displaced from the top level, I guess, iPad, and that didn't happen. Instead, Apple introduced the iPad Pro for about eight hundred dollars and we went, well, that's not going to work. So the iPad Air two has stayed in its same place at the same price. The same is true of the iPad Air one, and that caused us to look again and go, you know what, we need to look at that iPad Air one. So what you see there is the, the price that would be if we looked at the four-three of the iPad Air two. Again, the four-three lease model is that you lease for four years. The price per device is spread out over that four years and you have the opportunity to renew and leverage the value of the device after three years. That three-year fair market value is what we currently have in that pricing of three seventy-four, and then the price per year of one thirty-six forty-two is pretty much identical, maybe within a couple of cents, for what we pay currently for our student lease of iPad twos. The four-three lease of the iPad Air one then is the same total price for the device, but again, spread out over those four years. And so you see the one oh three sixty-nine per device per year. That's the same pricing that we approved last year for the four-three for the iPad Air two. And then the mini is exactly the same as it was last year. The mini two is same place as it was in our plan, same price as it was in our plan, so no change there. So what does that lead us to, to go on our next steps? Back to that same slide, I already copied. Here it is again with the update to reflect the new pricing, or actually the same pricing that we had last year, we were just hoping for a little bit different pricing. That second step there, the four-three lease of iPad Air twos, we're looking at iPad Air ones instead. Same for the rest of the plan. And when you look at our, our numbers, the increase in enrollment, just to add a handful of iPads, so one hundred more full-size iPads for our secondary students and for staff, and fifty more of the iPad minis to cover enrollment changes there, those are the pricing changes for the, for the totals over the course of the lease. What that brings you to total, and that would also include our management system with the Casper suite, we would still take the iPad lease completely from our operating capital. The capital process last year approved an additional thirty thousand dollars, which brought the total lease approval from capital up to about four hundred and fifteen thousand. The total cost moving forward with the, with the plan that's presented here still stays within that, so even adding those hundred extra iPad Air ones and the fifty extra iPad mini twos, we stay at about four hundred thousand per year. So within that four fifteen that we'd already approved. So that is, that's what I've got for you in terms of information, if there are questions.
What members other questions? No questions, okay.
All right.
Well, I, I so appreciate all, the, the number of times that you check in with us and the good stewardship that you have of this program. And while you're out there with curriculum and everything else, you really have never taken your eye off the, the financial impact to the district of this program, so that is very much appreciated. So, and, and when you're talking about technology, it's such a fluid situation with pricing and manufacturers and introducing and you can only, you know, you can only speculate and, and do what you can do, but you've really been so diligent in watching that and really managing that, so just excellent work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
She has us in a position now where we're going to be able to cover the increased enrollment, have enough iPad errors and enough iPad minis to cover all the folks that we wanted to make sure had those available and I think take us forward with the process. So it's, it's looking very good and very much appreciate all Kim's work and burning the midnight oil, thinking about all the different twists and ways that this could be done and it very much appreciated.
Thank you. Now you can leave.
Now that you're done?
Yes, now there's four meetings almost done, you can leave. Okay, second item for information, there was in your table file packet tonight, state summary report of world's best workforce plan.
Well, I just wanted to take a minute to share, as we've discussed, and if Mary Grace was here tonight, she would, I think, echo my discussion. As you know, when, when we provided the first report to the state last year, we mistakenly took at their word the fact that we could present it in any way that made the most sense to us. And so what we did is created a summary with a whole bunch of links in it, so we could link out and look at every individual progress report, every individual school improvement plan and so on, only to get three emails back in one day saying, number one, you know, you didn't, you didn't have all the goals addressed. Number two, if your goals were addressed in a link, we didn't look at any of the links. And so at that point, it became very clear that we needed to continue to push back with the state to say, if, if you need to tell us what it is you want us to do. And the reality is, if you're thinking about this, the, the legislature has put before the department the job of going through and reviewing four hundred or five hundred-plus school districts' world's best workforce plan and laying them side by side and saying, how is each district doing? And giving the commissioner the, the responsibility of having to identify districts that are not doing well, with the idea that you can hold back as much as two percent of the general fund formula to help the district do a better job of addressing world's best workforce. So this year, we actually got a document, we actually got a summary document. And so what you have in this, in your material is actually, this is the template filled out that was requested by the Department of Ed. And as you can tell, right at the top of it, it has, it's on Department of Ed stationary and we were asked to insert all the pieces. So as you can see, there's an insert that says, this is when we had our annual public hearing. Here's our, our actual agenda that shows that we reviewed it in, during a, a regular meeting and that we approved it as part of the superintendent's report. Beyond that then are, is the specific requirements that are requested in the template for every district. So there's a list of the district advisory committee members, there's a district youth council members, there's some specific information in terms of goals and results. And what we did is, we did take the time to say to them that the, a strategy of trying to create just a single goal for each of these pieces at the district level is not philosophically what we believe should happen, but we are good rule followers, we will do that. So what you're going to see is that in every one of the goals now, there is a goal, there's a description in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, if we actually had a district-level goal for that particular item, and then there's the goal results for twenty fourteen, fifteen. What you'll also see is every place where we had building-level goals that were smart goals and were focused and we had results, we included those, because it's the one place in this document that you can put as many words in as you What you'll also see is every place where we had building-level goals that were SMART goals and were focused and we had results, we included those because it's the one place in this document that you can put as many words in as you want to. And so we inserted basically all of the individual performances. So like in, in students in third grade achieving grade-level literacy, we not only have information about a district goal and district reading meeting or exceeding at 62.9%, but then we also described what Bridgewater had as a goal, what Greenville Park had as a goal, and what Sibley had as a goal, and the results for each of those pieces. The same thing then is in place for each of the other goals going through so that people will be able to review that. Again, there is some frustration on our part as, when you get to page seven and you're looking at the all students career in college ready by graduation. The goal identified by the state to measure career in college readiness is the eighth grade MCA proficiency in mathematics. That's the one measure. Obviously, we gave them several other measures to look at that we look at at the district level, including our explore test scores, including MCA reading proficiency, including our ACT average composite score, and including the fact that we have 89.2% of our AP test takers who get a score of three or more. Then we also listed information for the high school and the ALC. And then finally, we did have one where we actually had a goal that was a district goal initially, and that was that we would be beyond 90% in terms of our graduation rate, and we were able to meet that goal. That's the only piece of this document where we have the ability to add more information than just our goal information. And so we took advantage of that. And so far, we've gotten an email back from the department saying, we've got your plan. Thank you very much. So at least we've, we've hit that goal, we've, we've got that in by December 1st. Then the other thing you'll see then in the rest of this document is that the other pieces, and I would call your attention, let's say to page eight, notice it talks about systems, strategies and support, and then there's a part that's kind of in a gray italicized. You'll notice that the last requirement of that particular information is include only district-focused areas for 2014-15 school year and limit your response to 200 words. So we have gone through and we have put as many, as much information as we can provide, but we stayed within 200 words for each of the pieces. And again, our hope is that that will address the, the things that we're required to do. And again, we've tried to be very specific in terms of the work that we're doing. We do believe that in terms of our systems, of our evaluation process for teachers and principals, and in terms of the efforts that we're doing to address professional development for staff and for administrators are all exactly where they should be. And again, we'll hope that they will come back and share that information. Remember that the last time we turned one of these in, we got the, which I believe we had to turn in again about mid-year, we got the results back in June because I was sitting at a meeting in St. Paul when the results came across. So our, our hope is that they will be more expeditious in the completion so that we can see exactly what's there. You'll notice also, the last piece, there's nothing there. And it says, no, districts do not need to report information in this section at this time. This is federal, new federal requirement data. They are telling us ahead of time that this is going to be a future requirement. And it really is looking at, and I sat on a teacher equity task force last year. In that task force process, what was determined was that, and as you can kind of imagine, districts and buildings especially, that were really struggling academically, where they had lots of students in poverty, tended to have teachers who were less senior, had less education, less advanced degrees and so on. And so what, what the feds are really looking at is really trying to make sure that the quality of teachers that are available in those buildings are no different than the quality of teachers that are in a building that has not a lot of poverty, not a lot of minority population is in, in a more affluent area. It will be interesting to see how this, this particular piece plays out. But just know that we will have to include another 200-word set of information here next year where I'm sure we're going to be asked to review all of our staff and look at each building and determine if there's a differential between the experience levels and so on. The thing that's a little difficult about this, just for example, if you think about Greenville Park this year, which is our building that has the highest poverty, the highest number of students of color, oftentimes is the building that has a significantly larger EO population. Also had five teachers retire this last year that together probably were about 140 years of experience, several of whom kind of came with the building. They'd, they'd been there really since the building opened up. So if, if the state is going to look at using that data, one of the snags that they're going to have to deal with is what happens through not because teachers are leaving the, the building or not because districts are somehow not placing high-quality teachers with lots of experience in buildings, but simply because we have a significant number of teachers that will be retiring every year for the next several years who are baby boomers. I'm not sure how this data is going to play out. But I do know that it's, it's going to be problematic and we're going to be asked to report that data out in detail starting next year. So just wanted to share with you, this is kind of the final report that went to the state. We did everything to make sure that it was clear to them that there were a lot more goals than they were willing to look at and that our focus was based on our best intention of providing goals at the building level, which is where we believe that if you're really going to see improvement, if you're really going to see something happen, that's where it happens. And I think tonight especially, you saw exactly that piece. It wasn't because we created the district goal around reading or mathematics or around graduation. It was because the high school in Bridgewater this week really showed you, what did they do to attack this issue and how did they do that? And that Bridgewater didn't do it in the same way that the high school did it. The reality is that any time you set goals that are only set at the district level, I think you really hobble the ability of individual buildings to really use their creativity well. But that's kind of where we are right now. So I would be happy to answer any questions, but I just wanted you to see what was getting sent in so that you know, number one, we met our goal, it's in before December 1st, and it does match all the requirements that the state has provided to us.
Great job. Questions? I have one question about, so if they are talking about 2016 and the ECEA Act, is that based on the current one or what they anticipate will be potentially under the Act depending on December?
Well, actually, actually, this section is the existing ESEA.
So that could?
So we don't know if there will be adjustments or changes when the new ESEA Act comes out. I mean, there's a tremendous set of changes that are set in the next, in the new version of ESEA. A significant gutting of the federal oversight in terms of elementary and secondary education, really refocusing on letting the states and individual districts have control in terms of looking at the pieces. The one core piece that stays in place with the new proposed ESEA framework is the concept of they still are expecting accountability through measurement and reading and mathematics every year, third through eighth grade, and then again, once in high school. But there is a lot less of, in fact, all of the current sanctions and other kinds of pieces that were in place since 2001, for all intents and purposes disappear. What we don't know also is, as I shared with you earlier, what's going to happen to those pieces that are operating inside the bill that are because this is the way the Department of Education interpreted the statute and therefore doing some, some things that we think are going to actually be counterproductive, like the expansion of the number of tests. At the same time, everybody is saying, don't do this. So, all right, I'm off my horse now.
Well, one last, one last question.
Yes.
Will this be posted on the district website?
Yes, in fact, I think it probably already is, Mr. Hillman.
I will check.
Check and see. I, I thought it, I thought it probably was over.
I'm assuming that's a requirement of?
Not all of it is there yet.
Okay.
It will be up by December 1st.
Oh, sure.
Parts of it are up, not all of it.
Okay. Good.
And remember, when you go in, you'll not only see the summary document, you'll see the, the world's best workforce PowerPoint presentation. And then you'll see actually all the data behind it. So all of that, all of that individual data about all the different school improvement plans, all the different progress reports, all of the other links that were, are there are still embedded. So anybody who wants to look can dig as deep as they want and see the other pieces. But what, what is very clear from the department is they're really not interested in those pieces, they only want a summary document. And so that's what we're providing them.
Thank you. Okay. So moving on, board members, future meetings. We're already talking about our last meeting of 2015, which will be Monday, December 14th at 7:00 PM. And then our first meeting of 2016, Monday, July 11th.
January.
January. Excuse me. January 11th.
It's going to be a long time before the next meeting.
Just a reminder, we begin that evening with the organizational board meeting, followed by the regular school board meeting, all being held in the high school media center. So with that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn. Moved by Noel, second. Second by Ann. All, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.